I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Can I get an approval of the minutes from last meeting? A motion. A motion by Mr. Gunnar? The second?
We can't hear.
Second motion.
We can't hear.
A motion by Mr. Gunnar, Councilman Gunnar. Second by Councilman Fisher. Any discussion?
Discussion.
Yes, sir.
The minutes does not detail what happened last month at the meetings. For instance, I brought up utility. You're supposed, the administrator's supposed to bring something back to show us that senior system was, they made the bill all into one. And I got, I went to sit down and look at some things and that's not so sort of, that's not in the minutes. Another thing that's not in the minutes is a discussion about, you had certain topics on, but they don't say that we took the topics off to me. I mean, minutes got to read what happened there. This is not, yes. Also, after y'all read the minutes, it states, January minutes was approved, which by me, then it said, the January 8th agenda was approved. It should have been February 8th approved. This is March now. So if y'all read the minutes, y'all, if you actually read these minutes, you'll know. So that's not in the minutes. This also was discussed in detail, some of your items, like the naming of the district and all that. It should have said that the item wasn't approved, will come back and follow the meeting or something.
Right.
This doesn't tell us anything what's going on at the meetings. So I brought some examples, old minutes from January 2010, so you see what the minutes should be looking like. Visitors, don't have no visitors up here, all you have is council meeting, the council. Policemen have visitors who all visit, all that.
Great. Yeah, I was gonna make a move, mention that I removed my recommendations from last time, last month for this month.
Right. And then Mr. Benn is supposed to come back with the, showing that-
He can't hear you. He can't hear you.
Mr. Benn is supposed to-
Say it to everybody.
The sound system is not working.
No, it had worked for a while.
Oh, 'cause-
You get it fixed.
So basically, what Councilman's saying is, City Administrator DeBenn was supposed to come back with information about utility senior bills being all inclusive, and we want to look at that.
Some of those were in the discussions.
Then he mentioned, we want to streamline or invite more information in our meeting minutes, which I think is a good idea. We can definitely do that, and he has a sample up here from 2010 that we'll use. We'll give it to the city clerk, and we'll work with her to show, you know, what we want in the agenda, what we don't want in the agenda, and go from there.
Mr. Mayor, may I?
Yes, sir.
It's entirely up to this body, but we went through this about a year and a half, two years ago. It was taking the clerk a long time to try to capture conversations, discussion, and a general rule with minutes is minutes capture action taken in the meeting. It typically don't get deep in the weeds in discussion, it's the action taken. And it streamlines the process where we can focus on who made the motion, who made the second, and then whether the motion passed or failed. When you get off into the discussion of who said what and then how the conversation went, it becomes really difficult because she's not a court reporter, and that becomes hard to track.
We're not saying the details down to that, but we don't have anything about what we discussed. That's got to be in the minutes.
Yeah, and I will, I will be more than glad to sit down with her and review the minutes and, all right, this example, so yeah, we can go through, we can add stuff to it, so, and we'll make it presentable next month and try it, see what it looks like.
The formatting is really what you guys want. That was the point, is it can be as elaborate as you want it to be, I'm just saying that there is a degree of difficulty, it gets really complicated if we try to track the dialogue itself.
A administrator, we've been doing this for years, so I don't know how it can be hard to do just simply this. This is going to tell anything about what's been going on at the council meeting, period.
Okay.
I'd like my motion that we accept the minutes and amendments of what Councilmen Cullors have noted, and I got all my major topics about work sessions, and we can go into the depth as the topic in our work sessions, about how the minutes would be.
Time edge, straight. All right, thank you, got it. So there's a motion.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? We had a motion to approve the minutes, now we've got a motion to amend the minutes, so do you want to withdraw?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, withdraw your second. So a motion, second, all approved? Okay, all right, so that passes. All right, so minutes are done. Approval of meeting agenda, do I have a motion to approve the meeting agenda?
Some movement.
Do I have a second? Second by Anderson. Do, any discussion? Any discussion? Me and no discussion. Take a vote on the approval of the meeting agenda. All in favor, raise your hands. unanimous, okay. All right, public forum time, is there anybody signed up to speak?
Yes, I did.
Okay. I'm gonna read the rules of decorum that we've set. So the purpose of the rules of decorum is to foster an atmosphere of civil and courteous discourse even and especially when discussing contentious topics at all meetings held by the city council. All public comments should be as follows. Each speaker will get three minutes during the public comment area, comment period. Each speaker will direct his or her comments to the mayor or presiding officer and not to any other individuals present. Each speaker will refrain from personal attacks, foul or abusive language, and will maintain a civil and courteous manner and tone. Members of the audience will respect the rights of others and will not create noise or other disturbances that will disrupt or disturb the meeting. Any violation of the rules of decorum may result in the violator being removed from the premises, so. All right, Ms. Amathuswin, you've got the floor.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is regarding some notes I personally made regarding the redevelopment of the Gordon Street site. We know that the Washington Urban Redevelopment Authority, you are a, owns, I think, about 10 acres. This is my information, so if I'm incorrect, you can correct me. And the city owns 17 adjoining acres. It's a 27-acre site on Gordon Street, and it was the location of Washington Central High School and the Washington Wilkes Comprehensive High School. And it was noted by Mr. Joseph Anderson that we were the first comprehensive high school in the state of Georgia, I do believe. The URA, as far as I can see, is seeking proposals to redevelop the land it controls, and the city seems to be interested in including its acreage in the effort. My thought is the public should be involved in the redevelopment process. The community should have regular and meaningful opportunities to share ideas and opinions about the redevelopment with the URA and the city. And the URA and city processes should be open and transparent, and the public should be timely notified of meetings and plans. Now, I am suggesting some criteria for this redevelopment. The redevelopment should remember and respect the history, legacy, and significance of the site, especially to the surrounding community. The historic Washington Central High School buildings should be redeveloped and reused to the maximum extent possible. A range of options should be offered, including office space, health and wellness center, these are some suggestions, youth teen center, an event venue, the auditorium cafeteria, a museum, extended daycare facility, affordable housing, rental and ownership in a variety of sizes and types if that's feasible. The redevelopment should include amenities for the community, including indoor and outdoor facilities and ample green space. And finally, the developers should commit to a community benefits agreement, including special consideration to hiring local workers, to using local companies during the redevelopment process, and to offering locals access to new housing. And I have copies of these for you. And in final say, just because I've never spoken to this group before, all of you who have rule over us via election or selection are holding God-ordained leadership and administrative positions. Thus, you should always be constrained to do God's will for His people and not your personal will. You are in my prayers.
Thank you, very much.
Amen.
Thank you, thank you.
Well, I'll give it to the mayor, and you can pass it.
Thank you.
God bless you.
Amathus?
Yes.
You still have prettiest handwriting on earth.
Thank you, God bless you. I thought he thought I was a major. Come on, somebody.
Anybody else, anybody else? All right, so let's move on to the mayor action topics. These are actually just recommendations that I'll seek a motion for. The first one is to recognize, start to recognize our hometown artists and our hometown heroes by starting with Hillary Lindsey Scott. Most of y'all know her, she graduated high school here, she grew up here, you know her parents. I would like to do just a signage at the entrance to all the city entrances, starting with Hillary Lindsey Scott, and then look at adding other artists that we've, that have come from here, like we've done proclamations for, and anybody that the city thinks needs to be honored, I'd like to start doing that. It's a, I think it's a nice entrance into the city when you see hometown of Grammy Award-winning songwriter Hillary Lindsey Scott, or rapper, or artist, or DJ. So I think that's one of the recommendations that I would like to seek approval for, and we, of course, we'd have to probably go with DOT and check with them and make sure the signage meets criteria, but I think that's a start. If I could get a motion from somebody to, to start this process? Does motion, do I have a second?
To start the process and move towards this.
Move towards this, yes.
I'll second the motion.
All right, do I have any discussion?
Discussion.
Yes.
That's, don't, until any, not only just that artist, but football players and anybody else that, from his hometown, is that right?
Yeah, ones that have made it and had a-
A career edit.
A career edit, something, yeah, yeah, like your brother, I think.
Yeah, him too.
Yeah, I saw one, and actually, Andy, I think, sent it to us, that had Luke Bryan's hometown and several other people named on that hometown, so.
That was Albany. It had, you had Lionel Richie, what, you had Luke Bryan, Lionel Richie, and one other, and they did a group photo in front of the sign going into Albany.
Albany, yeah.
It was really cool, it's hometown of, and they did like a promotional poster for it.
And it had like three or four names on it, we could do that too, so we just need to go and get DOT approval, come up with the process, and go from there. Any other discussion? All right, do I have a vote? All in favor, raise your hands. Is that a yes? Okay, all right, all right, passes, unanimous. Thank y'all. My second recommendation is to rename Persimmon Parkway into Jeff Hackney Drive or Jeff Hackney Probably get emotional on this one. Those of y'all who know Jeff Hackney, love him, I mean, he was a paramedic, a firefighter, he was always there if you needed him, a great friend, and, I mean, just an outstanding guy. And my best friend. Sorry, don't need to get emotional, but we are pursuing with the county building a new fire training center at the end of where the Old Concord area is down there, and I think that would be a fitting memorial to him and his service for this community, to honor him by naming Jeff Hackney Drive or Jeff Hackney Parkway. If I can get a motion for this?
So, Mayor, I think that, if I'm correct, I think that the process would be to get the contact, the property owners, and get them to sign off on it. But if we head down that direction, I don't have a problem with it.
Yes, I've contacted Berry Plastics already, that store, does all the stores down there. They don't have a true address there, other than a shipping address there, and they weren't, they're supposed to get back with me on that, but they wanted to know if we would approve it first before they would move forward with that, so, but they, they seem to be okay with it right now, so, yes.
Mr. Mayor, may I?
The process is they got to have this sign off.
You beat me to it.
Yeah.
There is, the ordinance does call out a process, and how we'll have to need to contact every, the property owners that are adjacent to it. So you would, your motion was set that in motion.
Right.
Subject to the approval of, no objections.
Okay. Motion is second, any further discussion? Take it up.
I make a motion that we rename Persimmon Parkway to Jeff Hackney Drive or Parkway.
Councilman, that we just start the process.
Yes, start the process, right, okay. Second. All right, and any further discussion? All right, vote. One, two, three, four, five, okay, all right, passes, thank you. Council, discussion topics, Councilman Anderson.
This is, to be clear, this is just a discussion topic and primarily for the citizens of Washington and those of you that are here now, and then others that will see the video and read about it. All the council members have discussed this because we had a group discussion and group text, where was this, just looking at it, last Tuesday. So what it is, is our state representative from Elton, Georgia is Rob Lebrich, he's our go-to guy to do anything in the state legislature. So the city council in November passed a motion to move towards the establishment of term limits. What Rob Lebrich is recommending, and has recommended to us, is that it move forward to a referendum on the election next November, this November, 2024, to be presented to all the voters of Washington Wilkes County. So he is moving forward to do that, he recommended it in one of our power concurrence, which we gave him. So this is to let y'all know, the citizens of Washington know that this is moving forward to be a referendum, and so every registered voter would be able to give their opinion and let the, the people of this community decide, not just the city council. About sum it up there, Mayor?
About add to that reason, he's going to a referendum because the vote was 3-3, and he couldn't get it on the floor to pass. It shouldn't be up there anywhere, so. We agreed to a referendum so people can decide, but it shouldn't have been on the floor in the first place. So let's get that clearly, that's why they want to do a referendum, because the vote was 3-3.
Okay, any further discussion? All right, thank you, Councilman Anderson. Councilman Cullors, your action items?
Couple of them, I'm gonna save the stifling conversation for the works retreat.
Okay.
I have a problem with this next one, is we ask council and boards that we have people on, just calling in and voting by phone. It's clear as pain states that you have to be sick, bring a doctor's excuse, so we would know that you are voting by phone. I don't think we have it with all the boards that we select, people like Park and Red Board, you had Anderson, this young man next to me calling in, voting by phone, we did that a couple times last year. I still haven't seen enough documentation, so I'd like to put in the motion that anybody we put on any boards, fine if you're sick, but don't call in and vote by phone, just to talk, you know, because we got a lot of problems going on there, so I want to put this in the form of a motion that any boards that we put people on, or select people for, is already in place with the council, that must not have a doctor's excuse, they're doing it by Zoom, so I'm not, that's my motion.
Okay. When you say boards, are you meaning boards, commission, and authorities? What's a board, force, board, commission?
Board commissions thought that we, that the mayor and the council select to these boards.
Right, they appoint the board, commission, and authorities, so.
Yeah, they are appointments.
I know what you just said, boards.
Okay, right, yeah. Anybody that we appoint to, a board, yes.
So to clarify the motion, you want any, anyone that is appointed to a board, commission, or authority, not to be able to allow voting by phone without a doctor's excuse?
Doctor's excuse, are they doing Zoom, or it's a crisis, other than that, that's on the way. But this is, that's my motion.
Got the motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Go ahead, Councilman.
Well, my feeling of that is that there's a lot of things that go on besides council. I mean, you're just saying for council meetings, or you're saying for board meetings, or what are you saying, that can't call in?
In that meeting, right now, you can't do that here at the council, you can't just call in unless you have a doctor's excuse, because we're not in a pandemic, and we're not doing a Zoom. You understand that part?
I mean, I didn't know what the rules was on last.
Did they not give you all your books so y'all could read?
Yeah, he understands that, he's asking about the boards and authorities. You said boards, authorities, I was telling him.
I'm saying that-
I mean, I know what they are, but I'm saying-
We appoint people to these boards.
Right, so they can't call in from-
Like yourself, if you was on a board and you called in and you ain't got a doctor's excuse for, what you, what, what, what you on a board that you're not doing progress?
For example, next Friday, I've got to be for the train in here in Tenable on Friday. Well, the meeting held for what board I'm on, which is a cemetery board, is gonna meet Friday. I can't be in both places, so do I not get a count?
You gonna call in to that board?
I don't know, that's what I'm asking, am I supposed to call in, or am I not supposed to call in, or, I can't be in two places.
Well, that's a good point.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, I can't, you know.
I think if you-
And we have lives outside of here that things like a doctor's permits or whatever takes precedence, you have to be at.
Well, that's true, you have a life outside of here, you have to call in.
Yeah, I think that's a good point to raise, and maybe it needs to be extended to if you're away home sitting business.
Yeah. On your business, a lot of it still work, I mean, most, most of it still work, and if you have work-related things, you can't be in two places, so, I mean, I would rather be able to call in. Well, this is, this is just, I think, just about voting.
Once again, this is about voting, and you're doing it for a purpose.
You can-
Yeah, if you want to go to work and don't call in, that's fine, but don't call in and, and vote, because number one, if you call in and vote, you couldn't be there.
Okay, let's-
But if you call in and you're in a meeting and they're voting on something, you still don't have the right to vote?
Let's get a, let's get a council, council to clarify this.
So, Mr. Mayor, when this item is on the agenda, I pulled to make sure everybody understands that, under the Open Records Act, this would be specifically OCGA 50141G3, on any other occasion of the meeting of an agency or committee thereof, and so long as foreman is present in person, a member may participate by telephone conference if necessary due to reasons of health or absence from the jurisdiction, so long as the other requirements of this chapter are met, absent emergency conditions or the written opinion of a physician or other health professional. If reasons of health prevent a member's physical presence, no member shall participate by telephone conference pursuant to the subsection more than twice in one calendar year. Mr. Mayor and Council, it is not clear whether or not this specific law requires you to give the right to someone to appear if they are outside the jurisdiction as a, as a voting member more than twice in a year, or if this is a permissible right that you as a council can take away. I have found no jurisdiction that has required, that has taken away the two-time-a-year absent jurisdiction point. I would suggest to Councilman Cullors' point, if anybody is missed more than two times, a doctor's note would have to be present in order for that member to vote pursuant to the Open Meetings Act. As I understand the motion, though, the motion was related to appointees by this council onto boards, committees, and authorities. The Open Records Act does cover those entities, but that's not a council question, that is a question of your other, not only boards you create, but boards that you, or entities that you might serve on, but also those that you place citizens on, which I do believe you would have the right to so set those requirements if that's what the council decided to do.
Did we send a discussion?
Yes.
And to be clear, I respectfully disagree with Councilman Cullor's statement here. It is not established now in our code that you can not vote when you are missing a meeting for whatever reason, and it does not require a doctor's, you know, I defer to Adam, I just heard him say this, this does not, it does not require a doctor's excuse to miss. It just, we just heard him say that they're within the state law, it's up to no more than two times in a calendar year, right? And I would just like to ask, ask Councilman Cullors, is what's the prevailing logic if you have, you understand the issue, you're listening by phone, which is, we're not talking by, you know, old landlines, we're talking by very high-end technical smartphones, you're gonna be able to hear and be part of any discussion, especially council members and board members, if they understand the issue, if they were there in person, they would vote yes or no. So what's the difference if they're there on a phone, giving them the opportunity to vote yes or no? I don't quite understand the, the concern about that.
The concern is you, starting in whole media, missing meeting, and vote by phone. Stay there, listen, I listen to you, just listen to me.
Counselor, correct.
The attorney just told you that's, it's in place, I'm putting this on any boards that, you own the Park and Red Board, you called in.
That's correct.
You can call in and listen, I don't care if you call in and listen, but vote, you did that for a reason, and we're gonna bring that up in a few minutes, so, that's my point.
Mr. Mayor, I'm not sure where he's going, he's, it seems to be a loosely clouded accusation or something, and to be-
I mean, not loosely, Mayor.
Counselor, my-
To the attorney, we can't impose anything past state law, can we?
So the question is whether or not this law, this area of law's been preempted by the Open Records, Open Meetings Act, and it's not clear whether or not this is a floor that has been set, or whether or not the state of Georgia has said this is a right that has been extended. I have found no jurisdiction that has tested this theory. The safer of the interpretations would be that you can't go below what state law allows, but again, I have not found a court that has said that that's impermissible. But the safer would be to say, no voting pursuant to the Open Meetings Act, meaning you do get two times if you are outside the jurisdiction, or if you have a doctor's-
Excuse me. Well, I'll take my motion to that.
Two times?
Yeah.
Two times? Okay, so could you restate your motion for the clerk, please?
But it's already established, I think it's already-
Already established.
It's established for points two, so, okay then, good, I understand.
Okay. So, are we withdrawing the motion?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, to, to Councilman Cullor's point, I would suggest to any council member that is not going to be present, if you do have a doctor's note, please make sure the clerk has that, so you have that record, and I would prefer you do that as soon as possible, that way you're not using the doctor, finding you a good doctor that'll write you a note from a couple months ago.
To be clear, you're talking about city council members missing city council meetings.
Yes, sir.
No, I was just saying, a couple of boards too.
Which you're just talking about. Well, it would cover, the Open Record, Open Meetings Act covers any time you act in city business. It could be your membership on a committee, it could be a council, a board, authority- It could be your membership on a committee, it could be a council, a board authority, anything.
Okay.
Thank you. Next. Uh.
Yeah.
I have, uh, we discussed it, uh, call me in the city hall, about giving parking rec $20,000. Ten went towards parking rec, um, mowers, or whatever they need to do it, and another ten went towards using for, for anybody that come up with activity, that any youth program for matching funds, that was gonna use that $10,000 for. Once pronounced to me, they go to the parking rec meeting, uh, Mr. Dinnert said that this body told me to give $10,000 to the boxing guy, which wasn't true. He go watch the video and clearly stated, he wanted to do that, and we told him we can't do that. So, I want to make a motion, we take that $10,000 back from parking rec and distribute it to WCCP, so somebody can distribute it to the youth that they needed, because they didn't do what they said they was gonna do. That's my motion.
Okay, so a motion to rescind the $10,000 and reassign it to.
WCCP, to distribute amongst any, um, youth programs that someone needs matching money for. And upon they bringing a document on what they are doing with it.
Do I have a second?
A second? I got a question, though.
Yes.
Um, I would respectfully ask, um, Councilman Anderson, would he consider receiving his vote, since the vote was taken, and after you had opportunity to get the video, to see what the body had voted on? Would keep us from going down this road, since you have a little bit more information now, that would you receive the vote on, that way it wouldn't pass?
But, just to clarify, the Parks and Rec board, what was the actual vote? What was the turn, was it?
I think Councilman Cullors alluded to they're giving, um, I don't wanna mispeak, but it was giving $10,000 to the boxing, um, programs. And I, I would say on the record that he has not asked for any money, has never asked for any money. But, um, that was one of the things that they wanted. Give the old $10,000 versus let them come up and make a proposal, and make their proposal before the board, and let them vote on it.
But my question is, the vote, if he rescinds his vote, does, does the vote still pass Parks and Rec? Because it wasn't six to one, five to one?
I know Reverend Hill and, um, Troy didn't vote for it.
So, I think we would have to be, look at the vote, actually, to see if the vote would pass, or we can make that decision.
Councilman Anderson, he was at.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's my time to talk.
Go ahead, yes, sir.
This discussion, first, to get back into this, this is a, on the agenda, it's under Councilman Hill, the recommendation to suspend $10,000 payment to Parks and Rec. And I assume that in the absence of Reverend Hill, Councilman Hill, that Councilman Cullors, you're now stepping in to make that record.
I think I had that on my agenda.
Yes, but we already approved the agenda.
Either, just take what you want to tell us.
Maybe it's more general.
For all of us, we have a copy of the agenda, I just, I'm just reading the English. It says that council action topics are from Councilman Hill. He's not here, so now Councilman Cullors, who doesn't have it on the agenda, the approved agenda, he's taking it for action. Okay, that's just a statement of fact. I'm reading the statement of the motion from Councilman Hill. It says, "My motion is put on hold the $10,000 funded allocated to Parks and Recreation for failing to comply with guidelines, guidelines and recommendations set by the city council during the 2024 budget discussions." Fact. And for any of us or others would like to, to watch the video, which I have, again, most recently yesterday because of this, nowhere in that does it say that there are guidelines and requirements put on the additional $20,000. Let's be clear. The budget for 2024, and I'll refer to our, our city manager, we passed that, we, it was the previous city council, we all there, we passed the 2024 budget. One line in that budget is an additional $20,000 to our Parks and Rec. Parks and Rec is funded by partially, almost equally, between the city and the county. County owns the buildings, and they provide maintenance and other things. We, we, the city of Washington, with the monies allocated in the budgets, went from 105,000 to 125,000 for the year for Parks and Rec. Councilman Dinnert, who is no longer on the council, had a very passionate explanation of why we needed that money at Parks and Rec. He's been on the board for several years. The budget was approved. In the discussion, it talks about, and this is where our city administrator, uh, with some very wise comments, said, "We should not, as a city, dictate into a board or into a department exactly what they spend the money for." That should be the logic and the wisdom and the voting of that board, right? Didn't want to get into micromanaging and dictating with, with guidelines and requirements, or stipulations of how to use the additional $20,000. That was done. Move forward to February to the first meeting. Now, what's been alluded to, and I was at Public Record, I was at the Mayo Clinic in Jacksonville, Florida, so I couldn't quite be at two places at one time. I didn't even, I'm not gonna get a doctor's excuse, cause it wasn't a, that's not required. I called into the meeting. The meeting elected, the, it's my first meeting, it's Parks and Rec. I, as a city councilman, have been appointed to the Parks and Rec board starting this year. First meeting of the year. In the meeting of the year, with the other five or six other members, we just heard it was the vote was six to one, voted to elect or appoint Matt Dinnert as the chairman of the Parks and Rec board for 2024. That was a five to one or six to one vote, I think. We'd have to go back and look at the Parks and Rec board meetings. We're not the Parks and Rec here, we're the city council. The Parks and Rec run their own department. After Matt Dinnert was elected chairman, he started in with the monthly business of the meeting. One of which was, we've been allocated, we, the Parks and Rec, were allocated an additional $20,000. And his recommendation was that out of that 20, ten goes for, uh, for maintenance and equipment, and the other ten goes to support a sport program, which was the discussion. If you go back and look at the, in the, in the video, it is very explicit about the support to sports programs. Boxing is a sport program. It is a very worthy program. It has been very successful in the year, it's been there with zero funding. So, Councilman Dinnert, then now chairman of the board of the Parks and Rec, made that very logical, and I would say, say very logical and meaningful explanation of why that $10,000 should be allocated, so much per month, which comes out to about $800 a month, to, to support the boxing sport program that was already under, ongoing, based on this director that came in as a volunteer and volunteered to set this program up. So, that's what happened. The vote was, and I think it was either six to one, or five to one, or maybe it was five to two, to do that. That was a Parks and Rec action. It was the Parks and Rec's responsibility and authority to vote on the use of those monies, not the city council. We shouldn't even be talking about this now. It's not a city council issue, it's the Parks and Rec. It was no stipulation, or was no restriction put on the monies going to the Parks and Rec. Period. Fact.
Not true.
Mayor.
Not true. Yes, Councilman Cullors.
I would, I would respectfully disagree with that. And let me give you a couple of reasons why. I don't think this body of government would give money to a board without conditions. And those, well, without, without conditions. Furthermore, giving $10,000 to anybody without a proposal is not being very, um, responsible of the money that's.
It's not to anybody, it's to a sports program.
Whether, well, a sports program. If you give any money to a sports program without a proposal, or how that money would be utilized, is not being very responsible of the money that we're giving out. So, if you want to give $10,000 to anybody without them telling you what they're gonna use the money for, I don't think that we did that with this body. Matt, um, in respect for Matt, who wanted to make sure that, um, the boxing guy got funding, we tossed it around. And the reason why we tossed it around is because when Roxanne, before he had that group, we can't do one for one group, and don't do it for the other group.
Not a group. It's not a group. It's a sports grant within Parks and.
With a sport, but he dealing with kids, right? The other thing that you said was that we don't give him the money. Well, we give him a building for a dollar. Y'all take money out the Parks and Rec budget and pay for his insurance. Do y'all do that? He pay for the insurance out of Parks and Rec budget?
There's no funding to support, there's no funding.
It's a question, Reverend Hill.
You're getting into the weeds of what Parks and Rec.
No, you, you know, what you said was, you know, what you said was that y'all don't give him no money. And what I'm debunking is, because I respectfully disagree with you, that you give, you pay for the insurance for boxing, out of Parks and Rec, so you already gave him some money, outside the $10,000 that you're allowing him to get.
Okay. There is support to the program. Without funding, there's, 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 and there again, that's my first meeting on the Parks and Rec, all right? And I can defer, I think we're getting, there again, you're getting into the business of a department, into specifics of the department and how that department runs it, right? And there was no, let me ask you this, since you brought it, what were the guidelines and requirements established, established to the Parks and Rec?
The guidelines was that anybody who wanted to have access to the money would bring a proposal.
No.
Captain.
I, you can go back and look at the video. And was that, and point of work, point of work. All right.
Cause we did, Reverend Hill elaborated on that $10,000 for Parks and Rec. And, uh, do we give, do the Parks and Rec pay the $1,000 insurance to this guy?
Uh, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Reverend Counselor, I did send out a message apologizing for my tardiness, my lateness.
Yes, sir.
And I publicly apologize also for this, and I definitely wanted to kind of weigh in on this, uh, issue. My recall, and we looked back at the video also, in terms of the $20,000 that was allocated for, uh, Parks and Rec, $10,000 would go toward, um, training into the, training specifically, as well as into the overall operating budget. But the $10,000 that we're talking about, I think that we're talking about now, was specifically for all children of, uh, the city of Washington. That's a, that comes through Parks and Rec, with a, with a sports team would come together and figure out how they can leverage some of those dollars and, uh, do bigger and better things. And so, when I talked with the administrator, that's pretty much what the, uh, consensus was, as well as when we looked at the, uh, video. So, I am also asking that those $10,000 be earmarked for all of Parks and Recreation, in terms of our students, not kids that we serve. And if those dollars are not, uh, one thing that happened, and I represent this board at Parks and Recreation along with Andy, last term, it was another council member, I don't wanna call his name, but, um, they had on the agenda that this body had already voted to give $10,000 to this one specific group. And that was not what we done, uh, when we had our discussion, our negotiation. So, I'm also believing what Councilman Mahoney and others were saying, that that money was earmarked for all of our children, and not how they took those dollars and gave it to one group.
I, I went back and, and did watch the video, and Matt brought that up. He said he'd like to get $20,000. Uh, $10,000 for the general operating funds.
Correct.
To do education training and maintenance equipment, things like that. And then $10,000 for teen programs, boxing and Parks and Rec-type activities. So, I think we've already established that we've started providing them funds as a body. I think that we need to request Parks and Rec to show us what they're doing with the funds, how their, their program's working. He has to present his plan, his, his plan to that, cause I think he's fixing to add wrestling to it, so. There's different plans. And then, when it comes to budget next year, we evaluate that and say, okay, you really didn't do what we wanted you to do, well, we can't give you $10,000 more this year. We can give you, you know, whatever we can do. I think once the money has already started to process, then it's gonna be kind of hard to draw that $10,000 back.
Look, let me add just one more thing, Mr. Mayor, because I differ with that. We talked about that even before it happened. Uh, I remember, uh, specifically, Councilman Mahoney and Jerry talked about, you're gonna have all types of groups now coming to this body and respectfully asking for those dollars. So, uh, again, we need to make sure that those dollars earmarked, does what it was earmarked to do, and that was to service all of children. And those agencies that wanted some of those dollars would come together and figure out how they can leverage, how they can, uh, put those dollars to use and make it more. But not to give it to $10,000 to one group, that is not my, that was not my intention. It was not my intention now, why we allocated those dollars.
Do you remember what the vote was at Parks and Rec, what the number was?
It was six, zero.
Six to.
I mean, five, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, four, two. Uh, Troy Anderson and myself, when I explained to, uh, the board that they, they was making a mistake, and even, uh, Councilman Andy, I also explained to him, and then called back a couple of days later, text back, and asked, would they again reconsider? But, that's, Mr. Mayor, and this body, that is not what we allocated those dollars for, to give to one group, that $10,000 to give to one group. That's not what we allocated those dollars for. And I don't see us allowing that to happen, because again, uh, all groups, all other, um, sports event can come and say, give us $10,000, and we have to buy, we should buy it by then. So, I'm asking.
I think when, when me and you were on the board, we discussed with, uh, with the board and the, uh, and the Parks and Rec director, that, like Pop Warner, they had to do their own fundraising. We would match funds, or we would give them funds that, that collated with that, uh, with that fundraising, I guess. I think as a Parks and Rec board, y'all need to go back to them and say, okay, we want to put more stipulations on this money. We can give, you know, him $800 a month, or we can give him $500 a month, or whatever, to help him. But he has to present us with a plan, how many youth he's actually working with, what he's spending the money for, and then bring that back to this board, and then we make a decision as to where we should continue it. I think, you know, cause we give them $125,000 a year, if they're spending money on Pop Warner and basketball and all those, then we can make funds for other activities, too. You know, as, as well as we've talked before, I beg into youth. You know, the, the children have a lot to do, the youth, the teens don't. And I think that we need to look at allocating funds, WCCP, giving them more funds in the future. You know, to help with the teen programs and activities that we need. Parks and Rec, giving them more money if they need it. But I think once the board voted, they would, they would have to rescind that vote, or change that vote. And then, am I correct?
Have we took the check for that?
Yes.
Yes, let me explain that, Councilman.
Budget.
When, when.
Yeah.
When we changed their budget from 105 to 125, instead of taking 105 and dividing it into 12 payments, we take 125 and divide it into 12. So, they're getting their monthly check. So, what, what we really are saying now is, if, if you were, let's, either way, the way this board votes, this council votes, if you took $10,000 back, then we would have to figure out how to average that back out, and then lower the payment for the remainder of the year, to have recouped that money by the end of the year. Right? But I know, I do know this, they're counting on our monthly check, so we couldn't just say, well, let's just skip a month. That'd be catastrophic. But, but they are, they've already received three monthly installments toward that $20,000. Would be a good way to look at that.
Mayor.
Yes.
You know, I will, I will remind you that, um, you being the chief executive officer of the city, you know, you have the job to make sure that the money that we allocate, and the laws and the orders that we pass are being adhered to. Now, I will ask that you send a letter to the Parks and Rec board, let them know what your findings was after you have looked at the video, looked at the minutes. And if they choose not to allocate the money properly and correctly, that we will adjust our funding. and correctly, that we will adjust our funding and pour that money and find another financial agent, being maybe it is the, um, family connection to make sure that the wishes of this body is being adhered to.
Okay.
And just to, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilman.
And, and just to add to that, that is my motion again. Uh, WCCP are doing a wonderful job with youth, but I really had intended for those dollars in Parks and Rec, because all, I'm going to say again, all of our kids deserve to be part in all of the hard work our parents put in it. But Parks and Rec, and I'm a part of that board, uh, Troy Anderson and I was the only two that did not vote for that, because it's wrong to take those dollars and give it to one specific group. And I think again, as Councilman said, that if this body sends a letter, or, you know, we direct our administrators send a letter, and they do not follow the wishes of this board, then we take those dollars and send it over to, um, WCCP.
Okay. Councilman Mahoney.
Oh, yes, Councilman, you got something?
Yeah, I'm on my two click points clear.
We're getting some more chairs for y'all.
I'll go back and respectfully disagree with the, the video, which we do have a video, it's video by Mr. Grab back there. It was that Councilman Hill sent out to us and said, please watch this, which I've done twice now. And I'll tell you, from my estimation, there nowhere in there, it doesn't stipulate that there were guidelines, requirements, or restrictions on the money going. There was discussion about that, alright? Next point is, this is not to a group coming and asking for money. This is for a sport within the auspices of the Parks and Rec. And the Parks and Rec Board made the decision to allocate the monies as was done in the first meeting. So if the letter going to the Parks and Rec Board, then so be it, but then it's incumbent on the Parks and Rec Board to do whatever the letter dictates the Parks and Rec Board to do. Agree with that?
Yeah, well, that's what I'm saying, that we ask our administrator to send, uh, a letter, and we give them thirty days to, um, to meet the demand of this body, this board, as it relates to the ten thousand dollars. And if they don't, then that money will be transferred over to, uh, WCC, WWCP for, um, uh, youth services.
Okay. This is, this is my suggestion, is that Councilman Mahoney and myself, and if District Two wanted to, David or any of them, I wanted to send, let us get together, let us review what, any policies, procedures, guidelines, anything like that that we've done in the past, and then make a determination to send them a letter saying, these are the stipulations that you have to do in order to spend that money correctly, so that we follow.
I wanted to be, excuse me, Mr. Mayor, I apologize for interrupting, but I need to be a part of that, because that was, um, as you say, my baby, one of my babies. And, and I'm just asking, because again, I want to see this done and done right. And I don't want anyone to think that I'm trying to take, uh, anything from Parks and Rec. I'm wholeheartedly, uh, one hundred percent behind what we do at Parks and Rec. And I say we, as a board, but I want to make sure it's done right. So I understand what you're saying.
Well, since you're, since you're a voting member, I think it would be better if we did it without a voting member, so that way we keep you out of the loop. You're not held liable for it if any, any repercussions come. So, um, I think, would that be the proper way to do it?
No.
It's up to you.
That's us, okay. Councilman Mahoney, would you be willing to do that? Okay, so...
I agree with you.
Yeah. Yeah, I think he stands, stands with you on that, and so do us. So we can look at what they're doing, come up with a, with a good definition of how they're to spend that money slash tell us how they're spending the money.
Now, keep in mind, the same youth agency that we're talking about, Parks and Rec or the board, we're already paying the insurance for that agency.
And we'll look into that, so.
And so...
And it may be to where we say, okay, we can't, we're not paying that, that insurance anymore. You have to pay for that and use some of this money.
And it's already been...
Okay, yeah.
Let me ask, let me ask a question. So, the boxing, that's the Parks and Rec Board?
That's under Parks and Rec, yes. And so, one of the reasons I have concerns is because we as a board, for two years, have already, uh, paid the insurance. And we're doing all that we can to support that youth program.
Do y'all pay all the other insurance for the groups?
There's no other groups that, that's under Parks and Rec.
That's my, um, Pop Warner, y'all pay the insurance for Pop Warner?
No.
Okay. I, I think we need to move on. I think we need to table this motion until we can get a better guidance on what we're doing, bring it back next month, and let us, let us come up and you can sit with us and we can discuss this and, and move forward with it. So I think right now, we just need to probably table it until we get more information and guidance on how to go with this. So, yeah. Can I take that as a motion?
As well as Reverend Hill's.
I, I, I don't feel it, but I'll go with it. I'm really not feeling that because this body are telling certain groups, you have special privileges. And we got to be very careful with that.
Well, not this body. Parks and Rec may have given it to them. We gave them a lump sum. They spent it the way they see fit. That's the Parks and Rec Board. So we need to, if we're going to donate money to other entities, then we need to be specific on what they use it for, uh, when donating to, I think. So that's what we need to come up with. Is there a policy procedure? Is there guidelines for this? So let's table it until next month, and then we'll go from there.
And we're gonna straighten, have you weighed in on this matter? And I know we got to move on.
Yeah.
You want me to answer that question?
He's asking.
Yes, go ahead, yes.
Anybody who's watched the video knows my position on it. I think the camera was sitting right off my left shoulder. I voiced my views on trying to foster using those funds for some sort of seed, of seed money. But I don't see us, unless we want to, Councilman Colours, I think you came to my office shortly after that, and I know you did, Larry. We talked about it. I said, well, you know, you got the video, go back and watch the video. We can replay exactly what everybody said.
Yes.
And I advocated all along, I felt like we had an adequate budget. There was an ask if we could increase more for Parks and Rec. And I said, well, if you're going to do that, let's at least try to, you know, create seed money to support other sports, right? At the end of the day, the council voted what they voted, the money got transferred, and then we have to step back. From my view, whatever the Parks and Rec Board decided, we can certainly hold them accountable in the sense that we can come back and say, if we were in your shoes, we wouldn't have done it that way. We can also come back and say, and I think we talked about this, the best way in my view to do this is sit down with them and say, if that's your position, next time, we'll be a lot more specific when we up, when we up the ante. We're probably going to be very specific about where we feel like that, those funds need to go. And maybe that's a lesson learned for everybody all the way around, because it wasn't clear cut. Then now, now we're wrestling with it, right?
It was clear cut. Ain't no doubt about that. It's clear cut. You did wrong, and we're going to, we're going to hold up to it. I'm not with that. It was clear cut that it was a district to all sports, not just this one sport.
Alright, so we'll table this, the motion, second. Any discussion to table on it? Alright, we'll table it till next month. Moving on to Councilman Mahoney.
I still, I, I got to get to find out about the, uh, the seniors, because I didn't find no document saying that we could get all this into one.
You remember, you and I met, two days after that meeting, and you said, oh, well, I'm satisfied then. We backed on and then...
No, 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 no. I understand what you were saying about, uh, folks that get the checks different time of the month. That's understandable. But the part is that you never know when a senior will get on the cutoff list, uh, if they give a cutoff. I don't let them stay in their place. So if they did, they don't have to pay late charges, they don't have to pay a reconnect fee, they just pay their bill. I don't see what's wrong with them. They never on that, so what's wrong with leaving it like that? We never did, most did not do it. So I'm just saying that it's still on the books, just the way the most would say. We cannot deny senior citizens that come up and say, I won't be on the program. Well, I don't be on the cutoff list. I don't have to pay late fees. What's wrong?
Do we add that further, Mr. Mayor?
I, I, we have a program, because I made the motion.
May I make a comment? This issue that he's bringing up is not on the agenda.
It's not on the agenda, because we've already talked about stuff, we already talked about it and ran it back up, because he spoke about it back to this meeting. That's why I said the agenda, if the minutes wasn't right in the first place.
Okay.
I thought it was...
I'll go ahead, Councilman.
I thought it was tabled to, um, I thought the action for this body last night was to table it to this meeting. We're supposed to add the actual policy here to actually talk about what is actually in the policy to understand the language of it.
Well, right after that meeting, when you came to my office, you actually came around and sat by my chair.
I came back and looked in some books.
We went through this in detail, and I said, now, do you still want to move forward with it? And you said, no, I think this satisfies it.
No.
And that's why it's not on the agenda. That's why I didn't bring anything back to this board. And when I called you earlier today and said, is there anything else that we need to talk about before tonight?
Because you spoke about all that information back there.
I get it.
My, my point is this. The thing is, he said that we made one big motion to take, to do one policy. I have that policy, he has, now you have. You can't take something off that we already put in the motion that's in policy. You have the senior citizen come to City Hall that want to get on this program, and they're denying us, saying, uh, we'll put you on a, just tell us when you get paid. I, I, I'm with having the seniors, period. And I don't see what the problem is to, to do that.
I'd like to address that too, since we're here, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, go ahead.
And I've been happy to have brought all that, but again, I understand from our meeting, we didn't need to, but let me, if I can.
Go ahead.
We already have, and it has been in place, and still is in place, that when we have a senior citizen who receives social security, typically they come the third Wednesday of the morning. We have a number of them, when, that, when they move here, and they come to see us and say, my check comes really right at, almost at cutoff day, twenty-first, twenty-second, twenty-third. We enroll them in that program where when we pull up their building, there's actually a notation by their name, H E R, in parentheses, for agreement. And they're protected, right? And then on top of that, what we've been focusing on lately is now that we've got the energy assistance intake happening in Washington at Senior Center, we've been trying to make sure that we can get any of those seniors up there to get qualified to get an energy assistance, because if they get, let's just say it's five hundred dollars. That five hundred dollars puts them now money ahead that they, you see where I'm going with this? So we're trying every way we can to look out for our seniors. So we're referring seniors for the energy, uh, assistance when we know it's coming up to try to help every one of our senior customers. And I think, you know...
That is, that is wonderful. But the point is, if they was late paying their bill, would they be paying the late charge and reconnect fee? If they got cut off, would they be paying late charge and reconnect fee?
If they don't pay the bill at all, yes, they'd be cut off. Yes, they absolutely...
See, I know they're going to be cut off. My question was, would they be paying the late fees and reconnect fee?
The ones where the agreement don't, but the ones that don't have an agreement do. So we have people that are sixty-five and older that aren't on that.
Let me get you straight there. Anybody sixty-five years or older that got agreement that they take them in seven seventy, and then it came in, and they didn't pay it, they get cut off, but they're going to pay just their bill, not the late fees, not the reconnect fee. That's what you're telling me.
Uh, if I'm understanding your question right, that's what I'm telling you.
Okay.
If I, if I understand you correctly.
Okay, go ahead. Go ahead.
You know, you, I feel like the days that when you're in there and we're laughing in the office, and we're talking about the business.
The point is, you just stated that.
Let me finish.
Go ahead.
Did you have to finish?
Go ahead.
The seniors in our community, we go overboard to try to look out for our seniors. And I'm proud that we do, right? There are a few seniors, and I, I gave you an example, Councilman, when you were in my office, of a senior that abused that to the extent that even their landlord put them out. And it was somebody in, happened to be in District Two. And you didn't know the person, but I showed you their account.
And I told you, I understand.
And that was an example of one that had been on that program and abused it, and abused it, and abused it. And I'd said, that is such a small number. The bulk, the bulk of our customers that are sixty-five and older are not, are not the ones abusing, I would record. But we do have some, the reason I'm saying...
But we got this.
We do have some, and I do need to have enough teeth in the policy, that somebody can't use that as a reason to not pay the bill to everyone.
I agree, but I want to know that, that depiction is there just in case.
And so when I showed, right, so when I showed you that, and you said, oh, well, then I, I think this is good.
We're good. Let's keep it going.
Okay. Let's be clear. Because I think, y'all don't see it three different ways.
Yeah.
At the end of the day, if the seniors are late paying their bill, and I think that's what they want to know, and this body needs to know, so we get phone calls, we're not asking, do they pay the, um, late fee? And if it's on cutoff, on cutoff day, and they come in and pay their bill, do they pay the reconnect, the reconnect fee?
Remember what I said? You know, I was born at night, but it wasn't last night. I also understand that when the red dot comes on that camera, somebody's looking for a gotcha, okay? So I'm choosing over...
Jerry, no, 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 listen.
No, no, I wasn't saying you. I'm saying, listen, listen, here's what I'm saying. Those agreements that we have, and I'm glad to show them, I can actually run you a report of the agreements. And those are the very ones who have said, my social security check comes in, can I? Yes, you absolutely can. And we entered them in that, we noted in their file. Councilman Anderson is over sixty-five. If we pull his account up, it does not say agreement, because he hasn't requested one. Right? So if he's late, he would be charged a late fee, because he's not enrolled in that program. That's what I'm trying to differentiate. And we're glad to, anybody that's got that legitimate, we're absolutely glad to enroll.
But I, I guess that's why I was asking the question. So if there's something you can put into the system.
Yeah.
Where the system identifies that customer, then it'll make the whole job easy.
And, you know, in the ideal world, that's, I agree with you wholeheartedly, I do. It's the one that's over sixty-five that's abusing the system, you still have to have the way to deal with that. And as long as we can deal with that, the rest of our policies are really protecting our seniors well.
Okay, okay. Alright, so moving forward. Okay, we're going to talk about that in just a second.
Okay.
Councilman Mahoney.
Yeah, Mayor, Council, um, one thing I would like to, uh, introduce is that, um, I think in the, the conversation that we had today, that, um, Mayor and Council come up with dates to have a work session, um, in April. And maybe we do these work sessions periodically, um, maybe three to four months apart. So that way we stay abreast on what's going on with the city, what's going on with departments, stay on top of the budget. And some of these detailed things that we probably need to work out, we have more in-depth conversation and getting those things worked out. So that's my motion, that we come up with work sessions, um, quarterly work sessions, um, every four months.
Every three, three months?
Three months.
Every three months?
Three months.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Second, alright. Any discussion?
Discussion.
Yes.
I ain't want to use the word retreat. Yeah, I take that around a bit.
Yeah.
We'll, we'll call it a work session. We may do a retreat every once in a while. We'll call it a work session, so.
I, I think that's a good idea to have, um, work sessions.
Yep.
Because everything that's been discussed today could have been settled, and we've done business for them.
Right.
Because today, as me sitting out there for five years listening, it's the same thing, every month. We're all talking about ourselves. It's not about I, me, and mine, it's about them. They elected us, and we need to talk about them.
And in saying that, we, we have talked, and there's things with the electric rates, electric bills, different things that, uh, the citizens of Washington need, that we need to sit down and grind it out. And we're going to disagree and disagree, but we need to grind it out so we can...
to grind it out so we can get stuff done. Because I'm tired of sitting here watching like Newt says for five years and talk about the same stuff, we need to get stuff done, so.
And the mayor reached out to me because I serve on the electric committee, better understand the electric rates and power, power adjustment fees, and to come up with ways to explore the avenue, how do we dial back the fees, how do we dial back the rates, you know, and that's one of the things that I think it'd be great if we have these work sessions with all of us, to better understand how the electric bill is calculated, and, you know, to see that type of relief that our citizens have been charged all of us with, you know, so. I think any step going that direction, trying to dial that back is going to be a plus-plus to let this, um, let the citizens see that we are working the best interest of trying to offer some type of relief. So Mayor, I commend you for reaching out to me and talking.
And I reached out to you, and we had a great conversation, and we came up with some great ideas, but now we need to move forward with them. And one of those was protecting the seniors, so we want to make sure the seniors are protected, but then again, the ones that abuse the system, they have to have repercussions too, so we'll, we'll discuss that, but yes, thank you. Uh, and so I have a motion, a second, do I have any discuss, any further discussion? So we'll set quarterly work sessions, I will try to set one next.
How for the vote, say, we could.
Well, I'm just, I'm just saying, I'll try to set one before next meeting, so that way we can hash out some of these problems that we discussed tonight. So, and I'll let everybody know, we'll post it so the citizens will know in every avenue we can, so. Call for a vote? All in favor? unanimous, vote passes, alright. So, Councilman Mahoney.
Yes, sir. Um, last topic I have for the night is the adoption of a fit community in our city parks. Um, the goal is to create a fitness atmosphere in the city of Washington, all of our city parks and also, also competing for a fit community grant. Um, and basically, how I entailed it, when I looked at it, I've talked with, um, Councilman Fisher, and, um, his lovely wife, you know, who says she will, um, champion and try to do it as well. Um, the goal would be to go to our city parks, and we have, you bring your mat, you bring your towel, you bring your water bottle, and we all just, um, create a fit community so that we get our seniors, we get our youth, we get our families out, because right now, we don't never integrate until we go to a football game. So hopefully it will create some type of camaraderie.
Alright, it's a great motion. Do I have a second? So a second, any discussion?
Alright, question.
Yes, sir.
Question for Councilman Mahoney, is there a GMA program that's already existing in other communities in Georgia?
Yes, sir, once we prove that we are actively taking part in a fit community, then we also can actually go out and fit community grant.
And I will turn this back to the citizens, anybody that wants to get involved with pickleball, tennis, yoga, tai chi, anything like that, get in touch with Councilman Mahoney. We'll get you started on it, so. We have a motion, a second, any further discussion? Do I have a vote? All in favor? You're all in favor? Passes. Alright, anything else, Councilman Mahoney? City Administrator.
Before I get to my topic, I just got to ask Councilman Mahoney, are you wearing yoga pants to that first exercise?
It will be a good sight.
Alright, go ahead, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, last, I believe it was late August, I took part in a, um, DCA Fall Conference, and it was related to community housing and economic development. In that conference, there were three of us who represented Washington at that conference, Jocelyn Torres, Councilman Mahoney and I, we divided up, went to different, uh, sessions while we were there, but while we were there, we were wrestling with, um, a business opportunity, economic development opportunity for the expansion of the sawmill out here in our industrial park. And the challenge has to do with needing to extend our current sewer service further into that industrial park. And absolutely, uh, I find no fault whatsoever in the county and the Payroll and Golden Authority, they looked at that and said, it, it made less sense for the PDA to cover that cost because we, the city, would be the ones selling the water sewer service. I totally understand that, and I don't object to that at all. While I was there, I had a chance to talk with the Commissioner of DCA, we just caught him at a social function, told him about what we were up against, and it's, it could be upwards of, of a million dollar project. And, um, he pulled a couple of his staff over and had a little impromptu session, and I shared with some of y'all, came back, I think it was September, shared this casually informally with you, but he said, we do have some other funding, and it's this EIP program, it's an employee incentive program, and he said, there could be some funds there. Now, I'm making a promise, but we're willing to look at that. The city would have to put in a match, but it's, um, but he said, you know, if you, if you put in 100, 150,000, we might be able to go up to somewhere 750, 800,000. Well, it's certainly worth exploring, so that's exactly what we did. We started down that road with DCA's help, and part of the process, and where I'm born with all of this, is when you get DCA and CDBG involved, y'all been, especially the seasoned council, you know, they're, they're operating under so many strict guidelines, where you've got to check certain boxes. We had one recently, we had adopted a resolution right here that we would endeavor to offer second language support to workers on this new water line we're about to do out here. That was a requirement, if we had not passed that resolution, we couldn't even get the funds. So similarly, DCA required going through a process to seek the most qualified engineering group if we do in fact go forward with this sewer project. So this is a check the bogs, jump through the hoop, and all of this has methodically kind of clicked along since October, and it involved a DCA putting out a request for qualifications, it's not a bid, it's basically where engineering groups put their best foot forward, and then there's a, DCA put together a team, that team reviews all the qualifications, comes up the score sheet, it's in your packet, you'll see it in your packet here, in the cover letter dated, dated February 26th, and, uh, hands down, the highest score went to Carter and Slute Incorporated. That's not entirely a surprise because they're the most familiar, they've, they've done more work in water and sewer infrastructure than anybody else in the state here, so no surprise that they scored highest. So this simply is DCA's, you might say, last box to check that they went through, they completed this process, they've made this recommendation, and it would require the council to approve if indeed the funding happened, if indeed it went forward, that the work would be done by Carter and Slute based on the, uh, DCA guidance. So my recommendation is that we accept and adopt, um, the recommendation to procure Carter and Slute Engineering Service for the 2024 EIP. And again, that is if we get those funds.
So a motion. Second. Second, any discussion? Call for a vote? Alright, unanimous?
Those are all mine, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Do we need to break out an executive session? Alright, so no, no need for an executive session. I would like to say one thing, that, um, I, I received an email, or a text message yesterday about some vandalism within the city, I want to know that I promptly contacted, uh, Gene Turner, Chief Deputy, and he called me back that evening and said that they had already apprehended some of the suspects that were doing it, and that they're still working, questioning them. Most of them were minors in the teen area that we're talking about, so once again, teens, 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 we need to work with our teens, so that's something that I'm very big on. Uh, our teens are missing out, especially those middle school to high schoolers that can't participate in sports, or they don't have Parks and Rec activities, so, so we're going to be working on that, so. I would like to thank everybody for attending tonight. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second, all in favor? Alright, thank y'all.